Say without a shadow of a doubt, I own the rights to this music. I want to welcome you back to the hottest show on social media. The War Zone. I got my co-host Donovan Siddique in the building. My good friend Demetri Kay. And the legendary one, my boy Jeffrey L. Bonney. If y'all don't know who he is, you about to find out. Say, man, I'm gonna tell you, we finna go hard in the paint, so sit back. Say, I want to welcome you to the War Zone, man, and tell you happy hap- happy, happy, happy afternoon. No, I ain't been drinking, I'm just happy I'm breathing. You feel what I'm saying? Man, we sitting in the War Zone, it's been the average day, lot of stuff going on. We still dealing with the, uh, the coronavirus. And our guest tonight is Jeffrey L. Bonney, good friend of mine, good, good friend of mine, Jack A's Line alumni. You know, uh, award-winning writer from the, uh, world-famous Houston Forward Times. But my friend, my friend got sick, the Corona caught up with him. You feel what I'm saying? And we gonna get into that, we gonna see how Jeff doing. But right now, I want to say hello to my man Donovan Siddique. And I'm gonna turn this over to my good friend Demetri Kay.
Right, how you guys doing today? It's rough out there, y'all. I guess the, uh, the Corona limit stuff, I think last I heard it in California, didn't reach until the 15th, May 15th.
So hello, everyone, I hope everyone is having an odd great evening. And so I guess we're gonna spend about thirty minutes or so with Mr. Bonney. Uh, but first, um, for those of us who might know a little about yourself, something about yourself. So we know that you're a city council member. Um, how long have you been doing that? And what inspired you to be that?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, so, uh, I've been a city council member in Missouri City, Texas, uh, since 2017. Uh, it's an interesting question about what actually motivated me to do this? Because I, I've always kind of operated, uh, in the shadows or behind the scenes, uh, as relates to influence and, uh, things, particularly in the political arena. But a couple of things motivated me to get engaged and involved. I've been a, I've been a Missouri City resident for over twenty years. And, uh, there were a couple of things that I saw coming down the pipe. In 2016, I decided to run because I saw what was happening or about to happen in Washington DC. I kept hearing the things that, uh, our now-president was saying when he was running for office. And I was saying, I don't want those types of things to trickle down into Missouri City. We're a very diverse community, uh, you know, heavily African-American oriented. Uh, and I just didn't want those types of, uh, those types of, uh, uh, words and that type of culture to make its way to Missouri City and infiltrate it. And so, uh, I wanted to get involved for that reason. And then another reason is I looked at the trajectory of where everybody was. Uh, we have seven individuals on council, including, of course, the mayor. And out of the seven, uh, decision-makers for our city, over, uh, four of them were over seventy years of age. So I knew that eventually, you know, they would probably retire or, you know, no longer be able to do this. And so I was like, sometimes we always are like, you know, who can step up or who will do this or who will do that? And I said, you know, if not me, then who? You know, I, I know that I, I love my city. I know that I have the time and the expertise, the experience to bring something to the table, to help move Missouri City forward. And that's what I've done since 2017. I was just recently re-elected this past November for a second term. Uh, and so I'm, uh, I'm, I'm still doing what it is that I was, uh, I started to do in the beginning. That was my focus and that's what continues to be my focus.
Well, I tell you what, Jeff, I know you, you ended up getting sick. Can, can you tell us what happened and, and, and the symptoms that you had? And how's your recovery been?
Man, uh, bruh, I mean, this thing was crazy, uh. You know, I, I, I travel a lot, I do a lot of things, I'm around a lot of people. And so people have asked me, you know, where do you think you got it? Honestly, I could, I couldn't even tell, uh, when, where, how, who. But what I can tell you is that on the seventeenth of March, it was a Tuesday. And I remember that day vividly because every Tuesday, Forward Times would go to print, that's our press day. And it's not uncommon for me to not eat breakfast or lunch because I'm focused on my work, right? But I started feeling faint around four o'clock. And then around five-thirty, I said to, uh, you know, the people at the, at the office, I said, you know, I need to go get me something to eat. I'm not feeling the best, so let her grab something. So I went down to the Reggae Hut, got me a little Oxtail plate. And, uh, I was excited that day because the, the, the great thing about it, they normally give you like four nice sized Oxtails, but they gave me six this day. So I was like really crunk, you know, like, oh, man, I'm about to tear, tear down. But I honestly, man, I ate a little bit of the rice and peas, ate a little bit of the vegetables, ate one Oxtail and just my appetite was gone. And from that day, the seventeenth, that evening, and we finished the paper. I've never been back to the Forward Times office since that day. Because, um, I started getting extremely sick, uh, that night. And self-quarantined and isolated myself in the house from the seventeenth until I went, when I actually went and got tested on the twenty-fifth, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. When I got tested, they told me I'd probably get my results in twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Uh, in the meantime, I had heavy diarrhea, uh, I had, uh, still had a loss of appetite. And it felt like I had a stomach bug. I called my primary care physician, he told me, well, you probably got a stomach bug or a food poisoning. So just self-quarantine, and he told me to take a few things and, but I, my body kept telling me, something's not right, something's not right. So I, I, I went to get tested, uh, because I, I wanted the peace of mind. I wanted to make sure I was okay. I just wanted to know if I had it or not. If you got it, then what you would do to deal with it? If you don't have it, then what's going on with me so we can address that? And, um, crazy part is, man, uh, and also for my family. I didn't want my family to be contaminated, uh, with this situation if I had it. And so two days later, on the twenty-seventh, before I even got my results, on that Friday, I started coughing up blood. And, uh, it was like real heavy, like consistent. And I called the doctor who administered the test, told him what had happened to me. Told me you need to get down to the ER right away so we can take a look at what's going on. And then while I was on the phone with him, he looked at my results and told me I was, I had tested positive for the coronavirus. So while I'm on my way to the hospital, uh, to the ER, I'm just thinking about, man, you know, what are they gonna do, how they gonna treat it, are they gonna be able to treat it? Because you start seeing all this stuff in the news, reading all this stuff, you just, you don't know what's going on. So I get to the ER, they do a CT scan on me and find that not only, uh, of my, some of my vital organs being impacted by this virus, but I had pneumonia on both of my lungs all over. And so, uh, that was kind of one of the primary causes of me coughing up the blood. Because it was heavy in my, in both my lungs. And so I turned around and, uh, got admitted immediately into ICU and stayed in ICU for nine days where they were able to, uh, help turn my situation around, man. I'm not gonna go into the full details of every single thing, but let me just tell you, man, I was, uh, facing the brink of death, man. Almost, uh, I had heart failure. Uh, like I said, that pneumonia, then turn around after they, they, uh, got my, my vitals stabilized, uh, got hit with the, uh, news that I had a, what's called a pulmonary embolism, which is a major blood clot on my right lung. Uh, and so they now had to start addressing that because that could be extremely fatal and life-threatening. So it was a lot going on, man, during this, this timeframe. And the main thing that I learned from it, man, and I've been sharing with everybody is, look, I don't care what your symptoms are, because my symptoms were not the standard symptoms. I didn't have shortness of breath, a fever, I didn't have, uh, heavy cough. I had diarrhea and, uh, some stomach, you know, pain, you know, if you will. And, uh, a, a loss of appetite. But if I wouldn't have listened to my body and I wouldn't have told, uh, you know, somebody that, hey, I need to get tested. Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee helped me connect with the doctor, uh, that I ended up getting tested, uh, by. And, um, very grateful to her for turning me on to, to these doctors, man, who saved my life, man. They saved my life completely. I, I give them, I give God all of the glory and the credit, but, uh, I give these doctors, because God used them to help turn my situation around, and that's why I'm talking to y'all right now. I got discharged from the hospital on April the fifth.
Oh, Donovan?
Well, are you, let me just ask you just a general question. You don't seem that, that old, can I ask you how old you are?
Oh, yeah, man, I just turned twenty-one.
Yeah.
No, I'm forty-five, man, forty-five.
Forty-five, so you know, I, I got five years on you and stuff like that.
I'll be celebrating my forty-sixth birthday on May the fourteenth. So if y'all wanna hold, if y'all wanna do a show strictly on my birthday, that's cool too.
Alright, we, we can do a dual show, mine is May ninth, so. But, uh, but no, but basically, you know, a lot of people are under the misconception that, you know, this is just, you know, something for people that are older and, you know, you gotta be like in your seventies and stuff. But, uh, they're, they're coming out with cases where younger people are now getting hit. And, uh, and like you said, uh, man, I'll praise the God that, you know, you got through it. Because I can only imagine what you went through. And, and you're a fairly, you know, a young, strong guy, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I'm grateful, man, I was, uh, healthy enough to, to fight through this because it was a fight. Uh, I'd have been through a lot of fights in my life, got my butt cooked a couple of times, not all the time, you know, a few times. But I ain't never ran from one, and this was one I couldn't run from, had to face it head-on. And I did, man, I saw it through and, uh, made sure that, uh, I'm here, uh, to be able to be here to care for my family and, uh, let others know that, like to your point, this thing, this coronavirus, and it's so, it's so crafty, man. This thing is, is very crafty because it's not a, a, a one-size-fits-all virus. It attacks everybody differently and your body differently in different ways. And it doesn't matter your age, your gender, your, uh, socioeconomic status, uh, your race. Although African-Americans tend to seem to be getting it harder right now, uh, because of pre-existing conditions and maybe other things. But, you know, for the most part, man, this thing is, uh, is relentless and it's, uh, seeking who it may devour. And, and, and I'm just glad that I wasn't taken out by it.
Now, we know that in the state of Texas, um, I don't feel that they've tested enough. Uh, Missouri City, well, Fort Bend in general tends to sometimes be ahead of a lot of people. You know, on, on major decisions and how they handle things. Um, how has, you know, the, the Missouri City or Fort Bend been able? Because I don't see the numbers really going up over there, but I see that you guys have a testing site, you know, all that. How have you guys been able to work, you know, city and county together to make sure that your people, you know, can get past this thing? Because y'all seem to be doing a good job, I tell you.
Well, actually, the, the, the numbers are increasing heavily out here in Fort Bend County. Uh, they, you know, we, we kind of have been following the lead of, uh, some of our peers in other areas, particularly Mayor Turner, uh, in, in Harris County, uh, and some of the things that they've done. But, you know, we just had a major peak, Missouri City now leads Fort Bend County in the number of cases that, uh, coronavirus cases that have come forth. Uh, I don't know if you saw the news about the, uh, the, uh, the nursing home where it was a big spike over there. I think it was twelve, uh, individuals who worked there and sixteen residents of the facility, uh, twenty-eight total that, that contracted the virus, that kind of really bumped the numbers up. Uh, there was a couple who, uh, actually were in their seventies. They went to the grocery store, uh, and the wife, uh, came home, contracted the vi- had contracted the virus, got sick, went to the hospital, a couple of days later, she was dead. And her husband, about four days after she passed away, he passed away. So this thing is airborne, uh, contagion, uh, and it's impacting everybody. Uh, we're not doing, we don't have a magic wand over here in Fort Bend County or in, uh, Missouri City that, uh, is keeping the coronavirus away. We're doing the same things that are being encouraged in, uh, Harris County and the city of Houston. Try to keep everybody in the house and safe, uh, as best that we can so as to avoid, um, a, a, an outbreak. And as, uh, Dr. Fauci, who is, uh, you know, of course, uh, been instrumental in, in communicating the status of where we are as a country holistically, he just came out and stated that the second wave of the coronavirus is gonna be worse than the, the, the current way that we're experiencing. And sometime maybe in the fall or in, uh, in the winter, that we'll start to see an uptick. And it's kind of reminiscent of the Spanish Flu of, uh, what, nineteen eighteen? Where you saw first wave that was bad, but then that second wave is what took so many people out. Uh, and so we gotta be very cognizant, they're opening up the states, uh, Texas, they've, uh, opened up the states of Georgia and other places. Um, we gotta do, we gotta use our own common sense. We gotta use our own, my God gave us common sense, he gave us a brain to use it. And we just can't jump out there, man, and just because they tell us that we can go to the movie theater or we can go to the restaurants, which I thought is funny, because they say you gotta wear a mask to go to the restaurant. Well, hell, how you gonna eat if you're in a restaurant wearing a mask? So, you know, it's just some things I don't think has been thought through. Uh, and, you know, who are gonna work in these places? The majority of people who are working in these, uh, places are, uh, African-Americans, Latinos. And, uh, you know, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a, a, a shame if we see a tremendous uptick because of the irresponsibility of many of our elected leaders to put us out there in harm's way. Uh, we know that the house is burning, why would you tell somebody to go back in the house?
Wow, Demetri?
Um, so first of all, I would like to say, you know, um, thank God that you are feeling much better. Um, so I did read up on your situation a little bit. And it sounds like, as you said, we were experiencing some things that weren't common. Because when we first heard about it, it was, you know, runny nose, uh, a cough, and then of course the lungs and things like that. But it sounded like you had, you know, some other issues like, you know, the coughing of blood, which I've never heard anybody, um, experience that. And so, um, the one question I have for you though is, how do you feel about reading and seeing people? Like, um, there was a big giant house party in Chicago over the weekend. What I say was a thousand people, um, in this house. And just from your, your testimony, you say you don't really know how you got it, right? So you have this house full of people, how, how does that make you feel? Not knowing how you got it, but these people are being like so irresponsible. It's like a literally a killer on the loose. What, 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 what goes through your mind when you see that?
Yeah, so first of all, we live in America. So, you know, in America, we have freedoms to do whatever it is that, well, most everything that we really feel like we want to do. There are some things we cannot. But, uh, you know, I think that, you know, they have every right to have held that party, to do what they wanted to do with that party. But when you think about it, it's, you know, this temporary satisfaction for you. And so what about the people that you're gonna interact with? You know, what about your other family members? What about your neighbors, your friends, uh, your coworkers, if you're, if you're still working? Uh, you gotta be cognizant of, of them and the fact that, you know, what you're doing. And then I'm, I'm assuming that those folks were in that party with no masks on. So, you know, you don't know who may have had it, who may have gotten contracted by it. And see, some, some, what we gotta also understand is some people are asymptomatic. They don't have any symptoms. Uh, I, I heard of a story of a very good friend of mine's, uh, friend, uh, who shares a joint custody with a, a twelve-year-old young wo- young son. Uh, they keep the son, you know, every few weeks and stuff. The son was with the mom, the mom contracted the virus. And she didn't tell anybody because she was like, I'm not living with anybody, I'm not dating anybody, I'm not, you know, so I don't have anybody else to tell about it. So she felt like she could just, you know, listen to what the doctor says, self-quarantine and take certain, uh, like vitamin C, et cetera, and just kind of wait it out. Well, her son ended up contracting the coronavirus at twelve years of age. But he had no symptoms, he was asymptomatic. So when the father came to pick up his son, now, because they have joint custody, the father ends up contracting the virus unbeknownst to him, like she didn't tell him or whatever. So he kept contracts the virus, but before he starts experiencing symptoms and knows that he has the virus, he took his son to go visit his parents, the grandparents. The grandparents end up contracting the virus, and to my knowledge, they're both still in ICU on ventilators right now. The older couple, uh, the grandparents. So I'm telling you, those type of decisions, you know, she should have sho- she should have told, uh, you know, the baby's, uh, her son's father. She should have told other people. Because once you have this virus, man, unless you treat it and you no longer have it, if you're positive, you're positive. So that means that you have a chance to contaminate somebody else. And that's another thing that I'm pushing for because not only do we need mask testing, but people that are testing positive for this virus are being sent home in many cases and told to take cough medicine if they're coughing. Or some people I know have gotten inhalers and it's just different things that people are being treated with, but they're not truly being treated for the virus. So they're still positive. I know somebody that, uh, they sent them home, gave them, you know, some over-the-counter stuff to take, and they tested since twice positive again, so three times positive. So unless we address, they addressed the coronavirus in my case. Because I was in the ICU, so they were able to treat it, deal with it. They gave me a heavy doses of vitamin C, cortisone shots. And, um, even before President, uh, Trump mentioned the word hydroxychloroquine, I actually was being administered that before it even became a national conversation. And for me, it worked. I can't speak for everybody else and I'm not pushing for it, I'm not advocating for it. I'm just telling you, for Jeff Bonney, it worked for me. So, um, you know, I, I do think it's irresponsible. I think, uh, Demetri, that we gotta be cognizant of other people. We can't just, uh, you know, think that, oh, I ain't got it, so, you know, I'm gonna just do me. Well, you doing you, if you continuously interacting with other people, you're, you're doing them in another way.
I have another question. So, uh, I just kind of, uh, piggybacking off what you said about the mom who was like, well, I don't live with anybody, I don't need to tell anybody. Do you think that will come to a point where, um, people will be ashamed maybe to admit they have it? Or they may gonna try to keep it under wraps, um, obviously making it worse for other people?
Well, I could see how people could, you know, you, if you're a biblical scholar or a person that reads the Bible, you know, uh, about leprosy and how they treated people that were lepers back in the day. Uh, they kind of treated them as outsiders, shunned them, you know, and whatnot. I, I'm really hopeful that people don't look at it that way because, uh, it's all about saving lives at this point. You know, like I said earlier, I mean, you know, do I want to sit up here and give a dissertation or some scriptures? Or, or try to talk about a conspiracy theory, uh, when the house is burning? Or do I want to save people and get them out of the house? So I'm wanna, I'm letting as many people as I know, know that I did contract the virus, that by the grace of God and His favor, I am, uh, on the other side of this. But the other thing about this is, uh, reports are showing, data are showing that ten percent or nine-point-five percent of people who actually tested negative for the virus and again, test, I mean, tested positive and then tested negative have been reactivated. So that means that one out of every ten persons who actually had it can get it again, or have it reactivated because it's no, it's not gone, you know, if you will. It's still kind of lingering in your body as a dormant, in a dormant state. But you gotta be careful. So I'm cognizant of anybody that I hang around, I'm still, uh, wearing my mask. Uh, plug to Omega Psi Phi fraternity, of course. I still, I'm still wearing my mask, you know, I'm going out, I'm protecting myself. I'm doing everything in my power to, uh, ensure that I protect me, I protect my family, I protect others that I'm around. Um, so I don't know if there's gonna be this fear or shame that people are experiencing. I just want people to feel free to know that, you know, it's okay to talk about it because we need each other. We need to help each other, we need to encourage each other, we need to challenge each other. I mean, I'm seeing all of these people, I went to the store today, man, it was so many people without masks on. I'm like, do y'all not know it's a virus going, I mean, a real serious, uh, virus that is airborne? And, and it can actually, uh, impact your life to the point of death? Of course, I can't have those conversations with strangers mostly because, you know, I don't know them and they don't know me. But I hope that answered your question.
I, uh, I remember me connecting really with Jeff. I've been knowing Jeff forever, but really connecting with Jeff when he had his morning show and I became a real talk junkie. And he used to talk economics all the time, he talked economics. My question is, do you realistically think that the US will go back to being normal? And our economic situation will either balance itself out? Or, or, or do you think it may just stay like it is and we, we gonna have to fight this for a long time?
There's so much uncertainty with this virus, man. I mean, there's no telling, there's no way that you can say there's an end date. So because of that, not only an end date, but a, a solution, a, a vaccine for this thing. So there's still so much uncertainty surrounding it. I don't see the United States not being volatile economically and just overall stability. I mean, everything has shut down. Think about it, every single thing in the entire world has shut down because of this virus. And, and so people's industries, their lives, oil has dropped below zero dollars a barrel. And I mean, you look at all of the things where people have built their legacies and their wealth on, have been impacted. So no, I don't believe that we're going to see the United States come back to normal. There's a new normal now. Uh, my new normal, your new normal, us wearing masks, us protecting ourselves, us understanding that this virus can, can, can destroy your life, can impact your life in a negative way, can kill you even. And so think about the fact that the governor, uh, that several governors said that the movie theaters can open back up. And you heard the major movie theater said, no, we ain't opening back up. Because first of all, you know, they could be facing lawsuits.
Exactly.
Because they, they put themselves out there to allow people to come in there knowing that this virus is out there. But then another thing is, they're only saying that, like in Texas's case, Governor Abbott said that they can only have twenty-five percent maximum occupancy. Well, why would I open up my, my business again when I know that I need seventy-five, eighty percent occupancy or traffic in order to make a, a, a dent in it? Everybody's not the turkey leg hut, you know what I'm saying?
Exactly.
You know, so, 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 you know, you gonna have people standing in line for the turkey leg hut that don't really care or whatever, they just want their turkey legs or they just want that, that experience. But, you know, some businesses can't afford to open back up. And then, you know, look at the, look at the things that you have to do to protect yourself, the things you gonna have to invest in to ensure that your place of business is secure from a environmental standpoint, from a health standpoint. Look at the insurance that you probably have to, uh, to, to now take out. So I think small businesses particularly need to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, you need to, to, to be careful what you ask for. You know, just trying to open up because you missing those dollars in the register may cost you more in the, in the, in the long term than it would in the short term. So industry-wide though, man, I mean, we in bad shape as a, as a country. That's why they're trying to rush to open up, man, because things are looking, you see that the, that the chicken, um, was it Tyson Foods? Saying that they wanted to shut down because they had an outbreak. And, and the president's like, nah, you ain't shutting down. I mean, come on, now really? You gonna tell this major corporation and company that they can't shut down? They need to continue? So that just shows you, man, uh, what the Bible says, man, the love of money is the root of all evil. The love of money, not the money itself, but the love of money is the root of all evil. And in this case, man, we see that they love, uh, money so much that like Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick said, uh, he said, man, it doesn't matter about living. You know, it, it matters about getting our country's economics back on track. This is the Lieutenant Governor of Texas that actually said that. So what if they die? Talking about the, the elders and our senior citizens. So what if they, you know, I would rather die, although he didn't say I would, rather die. He was like, what's the point of living, man, if, if our economy and our, and our, and our economic situation is solid? I, I want, I would want my grandparents to be here. You know, I would want them to be alive, uh, to be able to fight through a situation like this and to try to endure. But we have people, man, that are focused so much on money and, uh, and, 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 and material possessions that they'll sacrifice, they'll sacrifice the lives of many to, to, to bless the few.
Donovan, you get the last question for the good council member.
Um, alright, I, I thank you again for coming on the show. Now, um, you were, uh, you were in economics, so now we're gonna talk some economics stuff here. Now you're a councilman, now you're in the city. A lot of people can't go to work right now, and, and this isn't a gotcha question, but a lot of people want to know this.
Um, I'm okay with gotcha questions.
Yeah, the, the federal government hasn't put any moratorium on mortgages, rents, car payments and things of that nature. Uh, as a councilman from where you're at, or in, just in your opinion, uh, what, what is, is your city particularly doing to help the person that might not be able to go back to a job three or four months ago because nothing has stopped, you know, these people still want their money?
Right, um, you know, that's a great question. Uh, I, I, as far as the city is concerned, we don't really have, I mean, that's the private sector. Uh, so we really don't have any, uh, dealings with private sector matters or civil matters like that. So if you're talking about landlords and things like that, a lot of that stuff would be dealt with through like the civil courts. So justices of the peace and stuff like that, you'll see a lot of evictions and things like that, uh, appearing before, uh, uh, the people that are, are serving as justices of the peace. Uh, so, uh, though, but- Uh so uh though, but as far as the city is concerned, there's nothing that we can do as a city to uh provide any type of uh, well, as far as Missouri City is concerned. Uh any site, type of incentives or 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 things, you know, keep in mind that one district in the city of Houston uh with that pick, pick whichever one you want, eight through what, K or L or whatever uh is bigger than the entire city of Missouri City as a whole. So they have a lot of resources and the ability to do things to different types of uh things. So they have housing uh grants and funds that they receive that could possibly uh help individuals that are homeless or that are uh about to experience homeless, so homelessness. So I I mean, I I really would uh, I would seek out, uh I know that the city of Houston, for instance, has the uh office of uh the Complete Communities, uh I think Shannon Bugs is her name that heads that up. Uh so I would, I would reach out to the city of uh of Houston uh and and see what type of resources they have. And then they would probably be more apt to connect to any other state, county or uh federal agencies that could be able to assist those individuals. But I I do believe that there are a lot of people that are negatively being impacted economically uh by this. And that's why, you know, we really need to have another discussion uh holistically about the state of black America uh and how situations like this cause us to come hat in hand looking for someone to help us when we could help ourselves through uh empowerment initiatives and other types of means. Uh we have some health disparities that we need to talk about in our communities and we can't ignore those anymore. Uh we can't ignore those anymore, we need to try to do what we can to address those things if a person doesn't have insurance. Uh they're afraid to go to the doctor, they don't feel like they can get tested, you know, or 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 they don't have the ability to feel like they can get treated. Uh and I'll and I'll end on this note, my mom used to work uh at Walgreens. Um she was a cosmetologist and my mom, uh you know, you know how old school folks, man, they you know, operated a lot on ego and pride. Uh my mom didn't wanna tell me that she was experiencing some issues with her her teeth. Uh and so she had a dental plan, but you know how it is with dental plans, I mean, they don't really cover a whole lot. Uh and so she never told me that she was experiencing these issues with her mouth. And so one day I go over to the house and I find her kinda in the fetal position in pain. I'm like, mom, what's going on, we gotta get you uh to the hospital. I get her to the hospital, I didn't know that my mom, because she felt like she couldn't afford to go to the dentist to pay for for things, had been putting like cotton ball, cotton uh balls and or tissue in her mouth to kinda offset the teeth she had lost. But in the meantime, she ended up becoming what's called septic. And uh she had diabetes and she ended up uh passing away as a result of that situation. Back in two thousand and four, she, well, two thousand and three, she got ill, slipped into a coma and came out in a vegetative state and ended up passing away March first of two thousand and four. But I say all that to say that if she would have gotten the proper care for her um her 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 teeth and her uh oral care, then she would have not been in that situation. Uh and and so there's so many uh Shirley Bonnies out there. You know, there's so many individuals that probably uh feel like they can't afford uh to go. Uh don't have the means to go. And uh I just feel like we need to do, we need to have these serious conversations to go beyond highlighting that the issues, but really trying to figure out how we can truly address them. And that's what I'm doing with this coronavirus, I'm working with groups, doctors and others behind the scenes and uh whatnot to ensure that people are getting tested and people are being treated for this virus. Cause I'm, I can't, uh I don't wanna see any other African Americans die. I just lost another friend of mine this past Thursday to the coronavirus. Uh and so I just, I just, I'm just tired of it and I gotta do something about it.
I I want everybody to know that's watching, if you don't know who this man is, you need to become a digital subscriber to the Houston Forward Times, one of the oldest black publications in the country. And they have fantastic writers, man, and you can always learn something when you read that newspaper. Jeff is 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 very humble, he's also the president of the Jack Yates National Alumni Association. So this is a guy as an elected official that 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 we talk about every night. He's been doing the job before he ever got in the office, he was a public servant before he ever took office. So you know, for me, it sets the example for a young black politician or African American politician in whole that that somebody like Jeff Bonney, who was just writing in the newspaper, you know, doing a talk show, is now one of the more more, what I consider one of the more successful African American politicians in the Houston area because he does the work. Bottom line, you gonna see Jeff everywhere, I don't know how he do it some days. And that's on top of being a father, you know, you know, years, couple of years ago, running back and forth across the state, you know, for volleyball games and basketball. Across the country, you know, he doing all that and at the same time still serving the community. I'm glad that you're doing better, uh can't wait for us to actually have a sit down because we're working on the Turkey Day Classic. Jeff is also on that committee, if y'all don't know, the Yates Wheatley rivalry, we bringing that big game back on Thanksgiving Day. Um brother, I appreciate everything that you do and you know, if you ever need me, you know, just pick up the phone, you know what it is, you know what it is.
Always, uh Gary Monroe, you know, you 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 the voice, uh the voice of the people, man, you always out here, man. Uh you know, turning over tables like Jesus in the in the temple. So I appreciate y'all for having me on.
Alright Jeff, thank you, brother. Alright, I I appreciate that uh for my man coming in and talking to us. Brought up a good point and I think I tagged it and I knew we, I knew it would come out tonight. The irresponsibility of the African American in a whole but being irresponsible right now during this pandemic. On a lot of levels, African Americans are not being responsible, whether it's with social distancing. You know, like you said, wearing your mask, you made, you know, reference to the big house party, Demetri. I mean, with our finances, me and me, we've been talking about finances since this started. You know, pay something, if you can pay your bills, pay your bills, that's the responsible thing to do. Don't think if you just hold on to it, that you're not gonna have to deal with it in a couple of months. Because in a couple of months, they they're not gonna want two hundred. If you were paying two hundred a month and you missed two months, they're gonna want six hundred. You see what I'm saying, now can you afford to do that and you've not been working? So y'all tell me, I I think in a lot of areas, we are truly being irresponsible.
Oh absolutely, um another thing that that we're not uh thinking about is if you're not making those payments and whatever payments you're, you know, you can make, it's also destroying your credit. So you can't even go refinance when that situation's gonna come up. So a lot of us are talking about the economics of uh how this is affecting us, especially us in our community. So you you know, everybody's gotta think about that, you you your credit is important. So when they put you in that bank plan and they say, oh yeah, we're we're gonna refinance you, they're gonna look at your credit because you missed a couple of those payments and they're gonna say, you missed one payment, by the way, that can drop your score by a hundred points. So you went from the seven hundreds, now you're in the six, if you're in the six eighty, now you're in the five eighty. You know, depending on your situation, that might be the difference between getting a refinancing or you don't qualify for this program.
You know what, and when you say that, out of all the moratoriums, they could have put on different aspects of different things. They didn't put one on your credit report, they telling you don't worry about it, but like you said, if you're not paying, it's gonna drop your credit score, Demetri?
Well, for me, it's always an issue, cause I'm in public relations, right? So I see it two ways, it's a thing of being reactive and proactive. Now, black people, not all of us, but I would say a lot of us are reactive. And so what I mean by that is, when things happen or it hits the fan, then we're like, oh my god! You know, what am I gonna do, right? Now proactive says, save your money for a rainy day, right? And if somebody said, I can't remember who it was, I don't know if it was on this show, but somebody said, it's not even raining, it's like, it's storming now. It's storming and not just for black people, but we know economically speaking, black people always get hit the hardest. Again, the wealth of black households, it is probably worse now, but on average is fifteen thousand dollars to that of a hundred and seventy thousand of white households. And so we can't afford a coronavirus, as they say, when uh America catches a cold, black people get to get the flu, right? And so we need to start thinking more in terms of how to be proactive. Stop buying stuff we don't need, we know largely black people are consumers and we don't produce anything. We give all of our money away and so we need to reverse that. Because as we see, we don't have anybody coming to save us, we're the only ones that's gonna save ourselves. It won't be the Republicans, it won't be the Democrats, it won't be Obama, Obama, it'll only be us, right? So we need to start thinking about saving some money. And for example, I know we don't really talk about this kinda stuff a lot, but a lot of states have opened, right? And a lot of states have allowed the nail shops and the hair shops and all that to open. Who do you see sitting in those nail shops? It's black women, it's black women, I don't know if those black women have that money, but gosh! Why not save that money? In addition to, you giving the money to people who don't even like you. Who are giving our people hell all over the world and especially in Africa. And so we need to stop being irresponsible with our money, it should like, we should just get tired of saying, well, what are we gonna do now? Oh, woe is me, how am I gonna pay my rent? Cause my thing is this, like when this, when we got the call, it was in April, early April, that everything was gonna shut down or actually was late March.
Yep.
There was people on what, the the twenty-fifth or so, I don't have my rent. Well, you didn't have it anyway, you know, cause now you you're using the coronavirus, you know, to shirk your responsibilities. But you know, and I know a lot of people don't have three to six months of savings to take care of emergencies, but we need to start thinking in those terms. Another thing, and I'll close this, a lot of us are disproportionately dying the most. How many of us have life insurance? I ain't talking about no GoFundMe account, I'm talking about life insurance. And I and I tell the people all the time, I used to be a life insurance agent, I'm not anymore, I don't have the ability to sell, you know, life insurance, so that's not the purpose of what I'm saying. But I would mostly talk to our people and you know what our people would say? Oh, that's a bill, oh, I ain't got it. Oh, that's a, you know, I don't, you know, I ain't gonna let, I'm gonna let somebody else worry about burying me. I can't tell you how many calls I would get at my desk, my mama died. Does she have insurance? Alright, let me go see Ms. Johnson, no, Ms. Johnson, you know, her policy lapsed three months ago. You know, so it's like, we have to stop being reactive and start acting more proactive.
I'll say this, I'm a licensed life and health insurance agent in the state of Texas. Irresponsible? Don't tell me you can't afford life insurance, don't tell me that. Because I'm talking about maybe fifteen, twenty dollars a month. And then we have to, the reason that people don't have life insurance is because they realistically do not know what life insurance is for. They don't know what it's for, they think, oh, I need this insurance to bury somebody, that's not what it's for. If I was married to Demetri and I passed away, my life insurance policy is there to make sure that the income that is gone because I'm not there anymore is replaced. So that means I have to understand financial literacy and that's the biggest problem for me with African Americans. It's not that we can't have an emergency fund, because I've been surviving this pandemic because I have a six month emergency fund. Six months, that means if something happened, I got six months worth of money to be able to pay whatever I normally need to pay. How did I do it? Just saving fifteen, twenty dollars here and there. But we don't wanna be responsible. So I I mean, even in my family, now, some people in my family don't like me right now. Because I'm the insurance agent, remember? So I'm telling you, I know you don't have it, man, I'm not standing on a corner begging for no money. So somebody died in the family, I get the phone call. Man, we 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 selling fish plates, I don't want none. I don't have no money for no fish plate, I'm not doing it. When you can take your money and go run to the nail shop, my African queens, do your hair. Please stop making these people believe that you need to go spend five hundred dollars on some app. That's your money right there, that's your emergency funds right there, but you don't wanna be responsible enough to do what you need to do, so and I'mma get off my blast. When you're not responsible enough to just have insurance for yourself, when you die, you've just put your children into more debt. They are in debt as soon as you close your eyes and you take that last breath. They they have, they they they, where they gonna get fif- fif- you know, funeral back in the day was twenty, twenty-five hundred dollars. The average funeral nowadays, ten to twelve thousand. They don't have a pot to piss in and a window to throw it out of, but they gotta come up with ten to twelve thousand to bury you, because you didn't wanna be responsible.
And they just have.
And and hold on Donovan, I'mma say this and it's quick, don't let a baby die because you get no sympathy from me, because insurance from a, for a child, two to three dollars a month.
Yeah, uh you know, we're talking about all this stuff and it's awesome stuff and we really gotta start changing how we think because the Trump administration, early in the administration, just um passed a law to where if you died and you had certain debts, they're not being discharged, they go to your next of kin or whoever's gonna uh do do deal with your estate. So they're not even letting us, you know, you know, go away. So that burden's gonna be put on your children or whoever else is next in line to do that.
And and you know, another thing, when we talk about death and insurance, a lot of people don't even realize that you are taxed more in death than you are when you live. If you crying about taxes now, if you could jump up out that coffin and see what they finna tax your people on that money they finna get, forty-seven to forty-eight percent. Your 401K, forty-seven to forty-eight percent. So if you left a hundred, you ain't got but four in there realistically, cause they gonna tax you. See, we don't, we don't wanna take care of our financial side of our business. And that's why we we lag behind on a lot of things. And when these situations happen with the Katrina's and the hurricanes and 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 the pandemics, we sitting out here like this here. Because you wanna be mad at the white folk, but you don't wanna do what the white folk do. Demetri?
When I was selling life insurance, and I don't even know how it got here, I guess I brought it up, maybe, you know, the universe wanted us to talk about it. But when I was selling life insurance, I would always ask people, how many car washes will it take to have funeral? And I would always get the answer of, well, I don't know. I said, now, okay, you don't know how many car washes you do, you know, you might get lucky, maybe some big, you know, rich time person like Donovan here will come and just, you know, throw a bunch of money in the bucket and say, here, pay for the funeral, that is probably rare. But you could be out there forever and we know the morgue don't hold bodies that long. After what, thirty days or so, they get rid of them. And so imagine scrubbing cars, holding signs while boo hooing, cause you gotta try to figure out how you gonna raise, as Gary said, ten to twelve thousand dollars just to get mama or even a baby in the ground. When, you know, good hell well, somebody, cause I used to, I'm old school in a in a life insurance age, where I have to go knock on people's door. Random strangers are knocking on doors, so I know at least one life insurance person came and knocked on your door and said, hey, I got a plan for you. As you said, a baby ten days old can be insured for five to ten dollars for that price for the rest of your life. But so to your point, to both your point, we're so ignorant, the way we think about money. And also, life insurance is not just for the dead, as Gary said, it's for the living, it's to leave a legacy. That's what white people do, they give, they don't die and then like you guys said, all of their estate is taxed to death and then they're left with five dollars, they have a life insurance policy to protect against death. And in addition, it leaves a legacy and some money, cause when I was, my daughter was young, I have, and I still have it, I had a lot of life insurance because I wanted her, if I was to drop dead upon signing that life insurance, I wanted her to go to upon signing that life insurance, I wanted her to go to college on a full ride, all the way paid. I wanted to be able to pay for her wedding. I wanted her to be able to cry and mourn my death with all the money in the world. I wanted her to be able to sail and fly wherever she wanted to without having to worry about mama. I said, and if you got to roll me off the side of a mountain somewhere, at least you gonna have the money in your pocket to do whatever you need to do. And that's how we need to start thinking about people. And as you said, stop leaving your people in debt. It's a horrible thing to try to figure out how you gonna cry. And for those of you who don't have life insurance, I used to work at a factory, well, years ago. And I would see wives and husbands coming right back to work after their loved one died. It could be a husband. The most companies give you five days bereavement, three days paid. So you gotta figure out how you're gonna get your husband in the ground. You probably got to use all your, 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 your vacation and come back to work and then pack boxes and cry. A life insurance will have you be able to rock in this, as a state hospital. But you got a bunch of G's in your bank account. You can tell that job kissed my ass. I don't need to come back to work. My husband died, which is unfortunate, but he left me with a lot of money. I ain't gotta worry about a job ever again. So those are the type of things we need to start thinking about when it comes to life insurance.
I, I think that, uh, the, the ones of us, especially in, in, in our race, African American, what you can do is get you some, some, some rich white friends. Because then you'll, you'll learn some things. I don't care what you think. You gonna learn some things. See, the first thing you gonna learn is when white people die, they leave trust funds. They don't leave debt. You see what I'm saying? They don't just spend their money on anything. More importantly, they try to own as much as they can own before they hit the age of forty-five. You see what I'm saying? We're too busy paying these car notes. We gotta keep paying car notes. We gotta keep being fly. We need the Gucci purse. Do you have a clue people don't like us? Louis Vuitton. Y'all out here spending money with folk that don't like us at all. But you know what? I've been blessed to work on drilling rigs around rich white folk. And the reason I'm telling y'all that is because my father used to always tell me, he say, you cannot check a million hanging around dudes that ain't got nothing but two dollars in their pocket. You got to hang with the folk that got the money if you trying to get to their money. Now, once I get to their money, I'm gonna be looking at who my president is. Because I'm gonna be in a different tax bracket. And ain't nothing wrong with being in a different tax bracket. Stop hanging around your partner pooping him, who gonna teach you nothing. But you laughing at that little white boy in that corner with them glasses on, look like a nerd, huh? That's the one that can tell you everything you need to know. But, you know, I don't, I don't knock it. I just, I don't understand it. Like I say, you, you did insurance, I did insurance. And I, I don't understand why, if you can have a cell phone bill, why you can't have insurance? You'd rather pay for a cell phone than insurance? Well, get what? When you die, you know, if they had your funeral at a, at a hole in the woods, I could. I ain't buying no fish plate though. Not because, just because you were not responsible when you were here. It's not that hard. Think about all the money we watch people blow in the clubs every Friday and Saturday night. You can't tell me you can't afford it.
Well, yeah, that's just saying that, Gary, because, uh, Dimitra, I, I text Dimitra this morning and I told her I was looking around some stocks. And I did that because I made thirty-three hundred dollars this morning. And I'm gonna take that thirty-three hundred dollars and I'm gonna reinvest it in some other stocks that I know. And by the way, just like you said, being a pilot, I hang around all these white folks, right? For years, I'm sitting in the airplane with these guys. And you're on headsets and you're hearing them talk about money and golf trips and all this stuff, right? And, you know, I'm just sitting there doing my thing. I'm soaking it up. Outside of insurance, what they also have, stocks. They invested in stocks. Southwest Airlines, we're all on Southwest Airlines. Why, why don't we have stock in Southwest Airlines? Southwest Airlines stock is thirty-five dollars. It's just, it's just simple things like that. So if I lost my job right now, today, just today, but I have a lot of stock, just today, I made thirty-three hundred dollars. Lack of a put in the bank, pay off a car note, if I had a car note, maybe I might make my rent. But my lack of a job, and Dimitra tell you, I haven't worked since twenty-twelve because I retired from the military. This is how they do it. And if you just listen to somebody who has the blueprint and says, here, here's how you do it. We don't do that. And I, it just, it just, it, it's amazing to me how they, we want to be rich and the people that are telling us how to do it and we don't follow that blueprint.
Dimitri?
Well, I'm gonna pay homage to my peoples. I learned my financial hustle and the hustle, all the hustle bones in my body from my mama and my daddy and my, you know, my grandparents and they black, you know. Um, I've always been taught to never spend more than you make. I have people coming to me all the time, oh, you know, I need to go to a, a budgeting class. I need to learn how to budget. I'm like, I'm gonna give you the game for free in less than five seconds. Don't spend more than you make. It's really that simple. Don't live above your means. If you're making five hundred dollars a week, don't spend six hundred dollars a week. That's how people get into debt. Live below your means. Like I'm a minimalist. I don't, you know, buy a bunch of stuff I don't need at all. You guys will probably see me in this shirt ten more times this year. Why? Because I don't care what people think about what I'm wearing. Now, I can go buy me a shirt for every day of the week, but I'm not gonna do that. Because I like money in my bank account more than I like to please everybody else for an hour. I love y'all though. But I'm just saying, you know, I gotta, I gotta think in terms of my bank account. And so that's where I learned, you know, uh, um, both of my brothers are, you know, top financial advisors. Uh, you know, some of the best to ever do it. My mom wrote a book on insurance, um, How Not to Get Played. Uh, my father, you know, uh, very economically sound. He owned his own business for a very long time. And so, uh, my grandmama, my great-grandmama, she put her money in her boobs and said, these are the only two suckers I trust. I mean, I know, but you know, that kind of stuff. And of course, you know, there's a lot of books and stuff you could read, but that's where I learned my financial literacy from, um, was from my people.
I, I think that one of the biggest misconceptions is, is that people have to make the decision about, do they want to end up rich or do they want to end up wealthy? I'd rather be wealthy. I don't want to be rich. Rich is temporary. Wealthy is generational. You see what I'm saying? And it's not hard to end, it's not hard for you to end up being wealthy. You just have to be smart with your money. You just have to be smart with your money. Is there a way for your money to make money for you? Now, I want people to, to, to do some research on this. Figure out how much money did OJ have left when he first went to prison? And then I want you to look at how much he had when he got out. His money made money for him. And he had most of his money sitting in an IUL account, a universal index life insurance account. All it does is make money for you. You can't lose any money in a, in a, in a, in a, in a, in IUL. You can't. See, people, when you go buy these regular term life insurance policies, man, Monroe, where you learn that from? Hanging with the Asians. Hanging, see me? I stopped hanging around Puka and Ray Ray them long time ago. They had me bent over cop cars. Them Asians had me staying at five-star hotels. Say what you want. Yeah, we got some black people that can do it. You feel what I'm saying? Bobby Scott say OJ went in with thirty-five. Bobby say OJ came out with seventy million. It's all about putting your money where it can make money for you. If you ain't smart enough to invest something in something right now, you crazy. And it don't take a lot of money right now. What are you gonna invest in, Mr. Monroe? Whatever I invested in, I'm gonna just sit here and wait till them cruise ships get back up and running. Because all you negroes gonna be trying to get to Puerto Vado again. Y'all gonna be on every boat in the Pacific, the Gulf and the Atlantic. And Monroe gonna be sitting in the highs, probably eating me a foot long from Sonic's, watching my money go through the roof. Make your money, let your money make money for you. You see what I'm saying? Let your money make money for you. Find something that you can invest in besides the, the motel that give you the hourly rate. They can't hear you, Donovan.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you're absolutely right. Uh, like, uh, right now, the, the economy has crashed, basically. This is the time you're supposed to be buying stocks. I mean, the stocks have lost forty percent of their value. And they're saying we're gonna be coming up on a housing, um, economic uh, situation where people are gonna start losing their houses within the next two to three months. They're gonna lose about forty to sixty percent of their value. So if you've been saving your money, uh, this is the time you're supposed to, to get that big house that you probably dreamed of at forty percent of discount. If that's what you're into, you know, so I don't know why. I, I just don't know why we don't do that. If it works for them, it should work for us.
Well, we hard-headed. We don't like to listen. We don't start looking at our bank accounts until we almost broke. We don't start looking at our bank accounts till we almost broke. And it's gonna be a bunch of homeless African Americans.
Yes.
In the next few months. It is, it's gonna be bad. And I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm in a better position than them. I just don't want to put myself in that position. So yes, I'm going to sacrifice right now. I'm not going to eat a lot of fast food and burn up all my money. You know, you got the twelve, so where, where your money at now? You got the twelve hundred? It's gone. What you gonna do now? You see what I'm saying? We just gotta be, we gotta stop being irresponsible. It kills me when I see people, you just putting up a post for a GoFundMe. I mean, come on, dog. It ain't that hard. And, and every time something happen to us right now, Trump did it. Trump ain't tell you blow all your money at the club? Trump ain't tell you to have two, three side pieces? You tricking off all your money? So you can't do like Trump. You can't grab him like that. And have millions sitting in the back. Y'all trying to grab, grab him by the P with twenty dollars. It ain't working nowadays. Go ahead, Dimitri.
I think guys, I apologize for that. Uh, my internet, the areas have been having some issues. And so, uh, hopefully I'll get this all fixed. It's, it's nerve-wracking anyway. Uh, but yeah, I mean, and unfortunately, a lot of people couldn't save their twelve hundred dollars. They had to spend it. But there's a lot of people who went and got their nails done and, you know, the hair done. And, you know, we saw the TVs fly off the shelf and all of that. Personally, you know, I think people should save it. I think people should save it, but you know, I just, I just get to the point to where, and Donovan knows my frustration. You know, because Donovan and I were in Africa in September and we joke a lot saying, you, you have your bags packed. Are you ready to go back? You know, because it's just like, I'm not gonna give up. I, I don't want to say that. I'm, I'm not gonna give up. But it's sometimes it's just, I, I, I just get baffled at the things we continue to do as black people. It, it, it's just, I just don't get it. You know, and as I always say, I, you know, I just get tired of coming in last place. And we shouldn't be, shouldn't be coming in last place because we are the greatest that's ever walked this planet Earth. My dad always called us pyramid builders. You know, because we are just that great, but we walk, you know, so low and not even just physically, but just mentally. We don't think we deserve better. And so we don't do better, you know? So I, I, I don't, I just, like I said, sometimes I, it's rare for people, normally I get speechless. Like, I don't even know what to say anymore.
Well, you know, it's, it's kind of like what we, we say on the other shows. Um, for those of you guys that have never been to Africa, you've been to the Caribbean thirty, forty times in your lifetime and you're going again next year. Go to Africa one time and I'm telling you, it's gonna change your life. It's gonna change your life. We saw things that were just, I mean, think, think of being in an environment to where everything is black owned, the police are black. I mean, just everything. And you just fit right in there and they treat you just with the utmost respect. And then, you know, it's kind of funny. It's like that Richard Pryor album. You, you, it's kind of weird seeing white people looking for each other. You know, so, I mean, it, it'll change your life. It'll just give you a different perspective.
I, I mean, I don't know. I just, like I said, I'm, I'm very hopeful, um, for us as black people. And, you know, I'm not gonna lie. It, it does get very discouraging because, um, I just think sometimes we, we are hopeless. You know, we were hopeless and we just kind of, you know, just go through life doing things every day. Like my brother, who was a great financial advisor, um, you know, he came on Donovan and I show and he talked about the stock market and said, now is the time. And I think a lot of people are starting to miss that window, but, you know, now is the time to invest in some stocks because this was a couple of weeks ago, obviously, because stocks were so low. You know, and my mom always talked about multiple streams of income. So for example, there's a lot of people who got the notice, um, yeah, the coronavirus is on the loose. We're gonna have to close down the factory. We don't know when you're coming back, right? That was their main and only source of income. Right? But a lot of people who got that notice was like, okay, that's fine. I got another gig. I, I got stock market. You know, life insurance policies hold cash value. If you were doing it right, you could have called that money in. Listen, it's an emergency. I need that money. You know, so there's a whole host of things we could be doing, starting our own businesses. That's another thing you could do. You know, but a lot of people were just stuck. They were completely stuck and, you know, had nowhere to turn. And so that's why I say, you know, we as black people, I think we need to start getting good and taking advice, you know. And to you guys' point, I don't like to give white people a whole lot of credit. But I will concede this point. They're doing something right. And I know they got a lot of their things by trickery and deceit. It's a fact. But they're doing some things right, you know? And so we can take, you know, some cues from them or whatever, but for the most part, like I said, stop. The black dollar circulates in our community six hours. That's like getting your paycheck right fresh in your hand. Okay, it's, you know, five hours and fifty-nine seconds, six hours in. And not only do we trick off our money in six hours, we trick off ninety-seven percent. That's like getting paid and tearing off ninety-seven percent of your check, balling it up and throwing it out to the wind and says, okay, I, you know, I have three percent and I'm gonna make it do what it do, you know? We need to, we need to change those things. So I could go on and on about that, but I won't.
Donovan, final words?
Well, final word is just like what Dimitra's, uh, father always says. We buy what we want and we beg for what we need.
So I'm gonna leave you with this. It's better to have money and not need it. And the needed and not having. Welcome to the pandemic tomorrow night. Robert Williams, Wayne Dolisofino. Bail reform, compassionate releases. This is gonna be a heavyweight fight. I don't know what y'all gonna be doing at seven o'clock, but I'm getting me a bag of popcorn. I can promise you that. And I'm gonna sit back and I'm gonna watch. Say, man, thank you for tuning in tonight. And I want to thank our guest, Missouri City City Councilman Jeffrey Boni. My good friend Donovan Siddique. My other co-host, Dimitri Kay. And I am the five-star general. And you've just been in the middle of the war zone. We'll see you tomorrow night.